With liberty and justice for all.
Nine?
For consent approval today, we have twenty-two accelerations, eight thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents for tax years two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen. We also have the real estate and personal property tax book pages to be signed by the commission. Fiduciary orders as of May twenty-eighth. Statement of services for Cynthia Stafford and Steve Higgins. A separate item that you can deal with after this approval is to revisit the estate of Dorothy Lee Weiss. Minutes of April sixteen, twenty-three, and thirty. Falters, General County Fund, one hundred twenty-nine thousand six ninety-five sixty-six. General County Fund with purchasing card, three thousand four twenty-five sixty-two. Cole Severance Fund, twenty-three thousand seven eighty-four fourteen. Kent Muffley, two thousand one thirty-two fifty. Nathan Dixon Park, seven hundred seventy-three dollars, six cents. Assessors valuation fund, two hundred ninety dollars, twenty-five cents. Nine-one-one cash, one thousand ten dollars, eighty-one cents. A total of one hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred twelve dollars and four cents. I have one budget revision, moving three thousand dollars from oh-two, four-oh-one County Commission to oh-two, nine-oh-five Festivals. And that's for the Scottsboro Street Fair that was approved some time ago, but the budget revision had been done yet.
Move for approval.
Second, keeping the Dorothy Lee Weiss estate separate.
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I don't have any other information on the estate.
Yeah, neither do I.
Oh, you got it?
What's that? Well, where does that slip, I read? This is, this is revisiting of a prior, of prior estate. Pass this on to you. Specifically, is there Mr. Carl Aaron Weiss here? Okay, is Larry Lee Weiss here?
Oh, yes.
Okay, is Jean Ray Weiss here? Okay, and you're the petitioner on this. It's on their mother's estate. They were in front of us, if you recall before, on a petition by Mr., uh... I'm sorry, Carl Weiss. By petition by Mr. Carl Weiss. Uh, because it had been three years and there had been no accounting done. Uh, and the state hadn't been settled. We had numerous questions, I had numerous questions trying to determine whether the, uh... It was just a matter of paperwork or whether the state had been divided. We, we also determined, we determined that it, it wasn't just a matter of paperwork, it was more than paperwork, the state had not been divided. And at that time, we gave Mr. Jean Ray Weiss thirty day, or sixty days from that date to file the necessary paperwork on the accounting. Uh, and we gave him six months from January fifteenth to close the, the estate. We didn't assign it to fiduciary commissioner for the simple reason the estate's so small, assigned to fiduciary committee, there would be nothing left. The, as of, uh, as of today, uh, unless I hear otherwise, the accounting was due on March fifteenth. It was not received, and as of today, it still not has been received.
Uh, yesterday, I was going to bring that in, and a lady called me downstairs to just want to figure for that.
Well, you can, you can address this, I'm just briefing the other commissioners. They'll have, they'll have, you, you can address this stuff. I'm, I'm just telling you what I know as of right now, then I'm going to pass this to the other commissioners. Anyway, the accounting was supposed to, uh, be in by March fifteenth, uh, and it wasn't. And July fifteenth would be settlement of the estate. And based on the petition, it appears that, at this juncture, that nothing has been done to move towards settlement. So that's, uh, that's a briefing. We've had this hearing before with the same parties before. There's two beneficiaries of the estate. Jean Ray Weiss and Carl Aaron Weiss. The third son was excluded under the will, so these are the only two that have standing.
If, if, in reading this, if I understand this correctly, uh, our decision's already made for us.
I think, I think it's, too, that's why I briefed it.
It appears that, uh, Jean Ray Weiss was given a deadline of sixty days to file necessary paperwork and didn't. And... It's, it's our, in, in the last action on this, uh, we said there will not be another hearing. That, uh, we will just remove Jean Ray Weiss's personal represent point, Carl Aaron Weiss's personal representative state of Dorothy Lee Weiss. So it appears to me that it's a already decided issue. We will, we will give you a chance to comment, but after we get done with our discussion here.
The, the only exception to that was we did give, uh, Mr. Jean Weiss the opportunity to appear before us before the end of the deadline if he was having difficulty, unforeseen difficulties that he did not know about.
Okay.
But to my knowledge, he did not, uh, come back to us or try to appear in front of us at all. He just ignored our order, basically, the way I see it.
Basically, I'd like to hear from each party without going into a long-winded rendition, because this is before us again, and just explain why he didn't, why Mr. Weiss did not meet the deadline. I think that, that's the key question for me.
Mr. Weiss, you want to make a comment here?
This sweater I felt and hit the back of my head, and I've had problems seeing and things like that. I took care of my older brother, and he's been sick where he has not been able to hardly walk. I've been helping him and wasn't able to complete speech because my eyesight fall and hit in the back of my head on ice this winter. And that's why I didn't get this done in time. I was going to bring it in yesterday downstairs, and the lady said, no, there's no sense because we're having a hearing here today.
I would like to, she's not here, I talked to Judy. In fact, what she told me was that she told you that since you're coming in today, you should bring it in and file it today, not that there's no excuse. And, and I would tend to believe Judy.
She did not say that, I'm sorry.
You have any other comment?
Uh, got the paperwork done, it's right here.
Did you turn that in down the clerk?
No, because she said bring it in today, is what she told me.
That's what I just said, she told me bring it in today, not, not to file it.
Thought we were going to file it yesterday, but she said, no, it was completed.
And when was the sixty-day, no?
Sixty-day was March fifteenth.
It's two months ago.
Let me ask you a couple other questions. There, there's questions of accounts, life insurance proceeds, you're supposed to advise your brother of all that. What have you done on that?
I can't advise him, he drives truck over the road, I never see the man.
Well, I, you, he's got, he's got a residence, he lives here. Now let me ask you another question.
But to my knowledge, he don't live here.
Where do you live, sir?
I have a residency at my friend's house because I drive it over the road, I'm about four days out in a month, maybe five.
You live here, right?
Yes, I have residence.
Okay, and, and that would have to be listed in the estate. Uh, and you obviously got it from his petition the last two times, because it was included in the petition. Well, so it's a post office box, that's an, that's an address. Okay, one final thing, that you and your brother are living in that house.
Yes.
That house is to be sold, have you listed it or contacted a Realtor or anything? Have you done anything?
The other house on Harrison Street was supposed to be divided, but I'm not familiar with it.
All right, have you, have you listed it?
I was going to have it bought, sold here, yes, but I haven't sold it yet, waiting on the paperwork to get done.
We've been through this whole thing before, and it's obvious.
Did she speak for me, because I'm losing my voice for it.
Sure.
If you say your name for the record.
My name's Jamie Weiss, I'm his daughter. The paperwork is done.
And what's your address, ma'am?
One seventy-seven Fairmore Drive, Westover, West Virginia.
Thank you.
That's my own, I haven't seen my uncle since my grandma's funeral. But the paperwork's done, any accounting information he has wants and needs is right here in the bag. If nobody else is interested in the property at Harrison Street, I would like to purchase that. So that's why a real estate agent has not been contacted. You know, we were hoping to get everything finalized and get the estate settled.
Sounds like there's a building conflict right there, if she's trying to buy the house.
I, I mean, I don't have to.
That's not, that's not acceptable to me.
Is that, you have any other comments?
Somebody looks over this paperwork and tells me that there's something I haven't done correctly, but I believe it's all corrected.
Okay, it just wasn't in on time.
Well, because I fell and hit the back of my skull, or I screwed up my vision because of that reason. Fell on ice in a parking lot.
Do I have a motion?
Does, does, uh, Mr. Carl Weiss have anything to say?
Well, I see no effort whatsoever in straightening this up, it just keeps going on and on and on. As far as the, the monies, he could have just popped it all because they had a way to get into her accounts. I got to see in white and white, the money's before she died, two weeks, and what was done with it. And also what's being done about the property. I'm supposed to be fifty percent owner.
And let me ask you a question, based on your petition, uh, that you previously filed, and currently, you would like to be appointed, is that correct? And you would complete it?
Uh, I can't say within the time, he's had three and a half years, I can't do it in three months. You can't sell a real estate in three months.
I'm not saying that, I'm asking you.
Yes, I will take over.
Okay, so I'm, uh, so if, if we give you, he, he's got attorney's accounting today, okay? Uh, I give you, uh... Carrie, help me here, what, when would the next accounting be due?
The next accounting?
Yeah, could we require him to have an earlier accounting than another annual accounting?
You can require him to have anything that you want him to have.
All right. We, you get the accounting today, you audit everything, and within four months, you submit, you submit a supplementary accounting or corrections. And within nine months, you, uh, su, you settle the estate, that includes selling the property. If you have a difficulty, you must come in here as he was required to do, come in here and apply to us for an extension of time. Uh, on that basis, and on that, those category restrictions that we placed, I moved it removed, we removed Mr. Jean Ray Weiss and appoint, uh, Carl, uh, help me here, Eric. Carl, Carl Aaron Weiss, uh, and, and, uh, under that stipulation.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second for just a little discussion. I think the hardest part of being a commissioner is, is what we're dealing with right now. I do not like to see, and this is continuous, families that have difficulty trying to resolve wills and beneficiaries and issues. Okay, let me get it right. Mr. Jean Weiss, I, I'm really sorry what happened to you, and I'm sure it did happen that you fell and hurt. I only wish you had then passed that on to us so we would have become aware of it and we could have possibly done something. The prob, but the problem is, because we had an order, we, 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 we made it clear, and that the order wasn't filled, I have an obligation as a commissioner to complete the order. So that's why we'll have to support this, even though I'm not real happy with the entire, with, none of us are really unhappy.
Well, I don't like to do it, the fact of the matter is...
We have no other option.
He had him out, all he had to do was pick up the phone and call us.
Yeah, I wish, I wish we could have worked something out, but hopefully this could be worked out, that now, when Mr. Carl Weiss goes through, that everything will be treated fairly, we will review it, and we'll deal with it at that time.
Well, he's got the deadlines too, he's got four months to give a supplementary accounting, he's got to close the estate in nine months, unless he comes back and applies for it.
Yes, that's all I have.
I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Now, in that motion, you're going to file that accounting, sir, go down and file that now.
Uh, introduction of youth service center employees.
They should be right out there waving the wings.
They are, I saw them.
Okay.
Well, I can do this.
Oh, you can do that, yeah?
That's just for you, that's just for your records.
Oh, okay.
I'm the director, um, I'm MJ Ketterman at Youth Service Center, and I'm here to promote and announce the hiring of the assistant director, which is Jennifer Gosling, and the house manager, Ed Hott.
I say move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I want to say, as part of, and Eldon and I are on that committee, we, we can't say enough about the home, the shelter home that we do, and unfortunately, it's used enormously. And I will also say Ed has cooked the best food when we have board meetings, I want to tell you. I think that's why we have a lot more board members showing up there.
My stomach's already growling.
Well, thank you.
We, we appreciate you all, and we, uh, thank you all for your service and look forward to continued contact, uh, with you all.
Thank you, I'll come back at you guys.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be at the lunch.
New dog warden, approval of new dog warden.
Yeah, we're here to do to introduce Sean at Stansberry, she's our new midnight shift dog warden. Uh, she will be full-time with benefits with a six-month probationary period.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second on favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Congratulations, you're welcome.
I don't mean, I don't mean to be rude, but does that say Patton on your shirt? General George S. Patton?
Don't scare her, she is nervous already.
Well, man, I say you got a good leader there, General Patton already. I was an, I was an armor officer, so he was one of my idols. You're welcome.
Thank you. Bid opening for paving to K nine adoption center.
Three beds.
You trust me with that opening?
At least you're too dangerous, don't worry about it.
I've got, uh, bid here from Parata Paving. We hereby submit specs and estimates for reserving Lockside Drive Road. All works should be performed according to specification provided thus, all pricing is based on prevailing wage scale. A includes entrance for River Road, fifty by seventy, and then, uh, and also the road coming up to the old recycling center, six hundred and seventy feet by fifteen. That price for A is twenty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. B is the road from the old cycling, uh, recycling center to the entrance to the K nine center. And coming up from the road from River Road, apply a stone shoulder, six hundred twenty-five by four feet by four inch compacting stone. For, price for B is twenty-two thousand, eight sixty, for total price, if we do both A and B, of forty-nine thousand, nine sixty.
I have a bid from the Asphalt Contractors and Site Work Incorporated. A, I won't go into the description of it, but, or price for A is forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. And B is sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, for a total bid of one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars.
And I have the third bid from Green River Group, and they have all the forms here. Price A is sixty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars for A. B is sixty thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, for a total of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and two dollars.
And do I have a motion to recommend these for Bobby's review?
Send my recommendation. Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, on favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Yeah, take those nods away from me.
And we're honored today with, uh, the presence of, uh, our executive director of, uh, County Commissioners Association of West Virginia, Vivian.
It is our honor and pleasure to be here with you, and I appreciate the county commission giving us the opportunity, uh, to be a part of your commission meeting today and to honor a couple of students from Mon County. Just a little background, the County Commissioners Association is an organization that represents county government across the state. We do it through a three-pronged effort, uh, education, representation, and communication among commissioners. So one of our efforts, one of the ways we're trying to promote this educational effort, not only education of county commissioners and the job and responsibilities that they have, but the public in general about what county government does. One of the methods that we've come up with that we really enjoy doing is a, a county essay contest. Three years ago, we had our first contest, um, and it's become an annual event. The title of the essay, five-hundred-word essay, is, uh, how does my county commission make life better for me? This is open to all eighth-grade students across the state. Eighth graders are traditionally studying West Virginia history, and so working with the Department of Education, they felt that this was the group that we should target. So, uh, it is a joy and a pleasure to get these entries in and to read them, and I want to commend the, the Montague County Commission at your efforts of getting your county students involved. And I understand, I planned to come up for your event and, uh, had a nasty virus that you didn't want me to bring and share. And so I missed it, but I understand that you guys had, uh, the kids in and they shadowed you, and that's tremendous, that's wonderful, and that's, that's what we're trying to promote.
You can watch it on YouTube.
Great, well, send us the address, because we would love, and we'll link it up to our social media so other folks can do it. Yeah, yeah, and so, uh, before I move further, I want to introduce to everybody Megan, Megan is my assistant, Megan Straub, here who's with me and taking pictures. Megan is relatively new to our office, she'll celebrate the first anniversary Ju, July first, July second. And so she has been tremendous in educating an old dog on social media and keeping our, both our Facebook and our Twitter accounts, she's taught me how to use it. And so we are getting a better presence out there, so it'd be great to link that up and put that on our website. The winning essays also will be on our website and, uh, featured in our newsletter, so that's, that's the history behind it. This is our third year, we had over seventy entries, and both third place and first place were from Mon County this year. So I think that deserves a round of applause right there. We've never had two winners from the same county. So I'm going to start with third place, and let me just say that placing in the top ten of this competition is an accomplishment. So many essays, and they were so good, I know you did your own here in Mon County, so you looked at a lot, we looked at them from all over the state. Very difficult to pick winners, in fact, the first year, we had one first-place monetary award, and that was just, that was just too hard. So we upped the budget and, um, created three monetary awards, and so third place is a monetary award of a hundred and fifty dollars, and Mr. Logan Klingerman was chosen. And, uh, come on out, please. Logan's teacher, I believe, is here, Miss Jane Frist, is that right? Okay, and, and Logan, you have someone else with you you want to introduce?
My parents and my principal, Mr. Haney.
Great, great, that's wonderful to have that support. What I'd like to ask with your indulgence is to ask Logan, if he would, to read his essay. And if you don't want to, I will, but, uh, you know, when you write something that's good and you place third out of seventy people across the state, you got to be really proud of it. And we would appreciate it if you would read it, because it says a lot of good things about your county.
I'll read it.
You, you're okay, just lean against the wall, it's all right. I'll stand by you if you fall over.
Right, catch me.
Oh, well.
Montague County Commission helps me in many ways, it has control over many groups that have the potential to save many lives. They can have control over the volunteer fire department as well as the sheriff's department. Keeping people safe and along with maintaining order are just a few subgroups this county commission is in charge of. Another thing the county commission does is organize budgets for the county. This sounds really boring until you hear about the budgets or for, the county commission is currently working on a budget for adding onto our pools and making swimming in them a year-round activity. As a group of county commission, as a group, the county commission does a lot for me and everyone that we don't even know. The major thing I look up to in the county commission is in charge of the volunteer fire department. Without the money the commission donates to the VFD, they won't be able to afford things that they need to do their job, which is a big help. The county commission has indirectly helped many of people through the volunteer fire department. Money and budgets are important, but help saving lives, being in charge of the group, they're in charge of. I personally think that it is a great thing, and I feel the volunteer fire department, as well as the county commission, should get credit for all the good they do together in association with each other. Another thing that I look up to in the county commission is in charge of is the sheriff's office. That is how they get the money to create county budgets. The sheriffs and deputies collect taxes and pass it over to the county commission to do with it what they need. With support of the county commission, we have a strong sheriff's department, but more importantly, the county commission is in charge of the sheriff's department, and those are the men and women who protect us and keep order in the county. I look up to the sheriffs, and I am proud to say that the commission are their bosses. Finally, the county commission helps me directly by creating budgets that result in some pretty cool things around town. They are currently working out ways to make a year-round swimming pool for everyone to enjoy. It doesn't save lives or protect people, but I still care about this part of the commission a lot because it's fun and games for all of us. The county commission helps me in many ways. Most of all, I didn't know them until recently. The county commission is in charge of volunteer fire department as well as the sheriff's department, and a group of commission works to create budgets of various things that benefit the community around town. All of these things are useful, and thanks to the Montague County Commission, it works well. The county commission helps me in many ways, and it's just a matter of knowing that.
Very good, Sean. Our association just, whoops, thanking you for participating, and more importantly, this has your hundred and fifty-dollar check. Use it wisely and keep writing, and, um, that was exactly what we were hoping to accomplish, is that he's learned a lot more about what county government does and how it helps. So help us educate the rest of the folks. Thank you.
You want to take a picture with the commission?
Oh, no, yeah, come on, sure.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Morning, sir.
Oh, monkey in the middle. Monkey in the middle.
Good luck at University High School.
Absolutely. And now, um, having gone from for, just choosing one winner to choosing, um, three top places, what we did for the first-place winner, not only does the first-place essay contest winner win a three-hundred-dollar check, we also have a three-hundred-dollar award for the teacher, uh, for classroom activities of the student who wins first place. And in this case, uh, my understanding is that this student had a team working with her, that there were two teachers, and so we split that between the two teachers. It seemed that when I spoke, I spoke with maybe, uh, Kim?
I'm Jody.
Jody Grif, yeah, is Kim here?
She is now.
Okay, well, I, I think, I, I think I talked with Kim on the phone, and she said it was a team effort, uh, between an English teacher and...
Or West Vir, I'm the English teacher, and Kim is the West Virginia Studies teacher.
Right, so they work together, and so we really appreciate the teachers who are involved in this and encourage their students. Sometimes students think, oh, well, you know, they'll never pick me, or this is, you know. We, we really appreciate you encouraging their efforts, and so we want to award that as well. I have those sticky notes to remind me that I don't give the wrong person the wrong thing, so, um, teachers Jody Grove and Kim Fowler, if you'll come up, and the first-place winner is Ms. Madeline White, and I've seen your Ms. Madeline, come up. I'm just nervous of this. And I'm going to also ask you if you would read yours, see, she's just ready. And she should be, well, you can come up and stand by her in case she falls. I'll, I'll catch up.
In counties like Montague County and in communities like Morgantown, there are many things that citizens take for granted. Parks, pools, and libraries are just a few. But how do we get these? The process involves collecting finances, construction crews, and public support. But if you go back far enough, most of these parks and other government-owned properties originated with the county commission. The county commission does much for this county and not just building libraries. They also prepare county budgets, service judges over all elections, and maintain county properties.
Take a breath. I tend to talk really fast. I just don't want you to pass out. You're doing great.
Although some of these duties don't directly affect me, they make my life better in one way or another. One of the county commission's duties is to prepare a budget for county offices. They disperse the money to the different offices based on several factors, including requested amount and recommended amount. Although I myself do not serve in one of these offices and do not receive the money directly, these offices use the money in ways that affect me and make my life better. For example, some of the money is given to the twelve fire, the twelve volunteer fire departments in Montague County and the health services so that in case of emergency, I won't have to worry as much as I would without these services. Another of the county commission's main duties is to oversee the proper conduction of the elections held in Montague County. They service judges over the elections and verify results in canvassing. They will also fill out records if a request is made. I may not yet be old enough to vote, but I will be able to in less than four years. So although it may not directly affect me yet, knowing that each vote cast is carefully counted and recounted is reassuring for when I am old enough to vote. Finally, one thing that the county commission does that affects me directly is to build public parks and maintain government properties. My family enjoys going to the public parks around Morgantown and also loves going swimming in the public pools such as Marilla and Creps. So the new water complex by the Cheat Lake is being, by Cheat Lake being considered would create hours of fun for all families. Also, the well-maintained parks are enjoyable and have clean, uh, are, well-maintained parks are enjoyable and having clean parks to visit has been a big part of my childhood. Based on the county, because the county commission creates and maintains these parks, they are safe, well-maintained places for families and children to visit and play at. These parks have most certainly made my life better. To conclude, there are many ways that the county commission helps me, helps make the lives of the county citizens better, even when they don't have this. They do many things, including preparing budget, overseeing elections, and developing and maintaining county properties. They make my life better in many ways and I am truly grateful for all they work, for all the work they put into helping this county and citizens than me.
Very good. Who'd like to introduce that's with you today?
Yeah, that's, that's my dad.
That's your dad. Nice to meet you, Dad. And you know, one thing I'd like to, Logan, you, what school are you with?
Westwood.
Westwood?
Westwood Middle.
Westwood Middle in?
Mount Near Middle.
Mount Near Middle, so it's two different schools. And if a teacher would come up, and I will also trust you to take Jody's back. Oh, dear Jody, Kim's back. And this is Madeline's certificate of participation. And we're very proud of you, Madeline. And you do, you are one of our ambassadors now. They'll teach other folks about county government. That's your three-hundred-dollar award. She, I can tell, she's very good. So. Want to get your picture?
Come on up. Teacher, come up. Was it, Kim was the other teacher?
Yes.
Did you tell she missed out?
I know. She got to.
Is that too wide?
Another one from University High School. And you're on YouTube for the rest of your life.
Definitely. You keep writing like that.
That's just inviting you, that was a big.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity.
Thank you.
If the families and teachers would catch me and Megan out in the hall, we'd like to take a picture of the student with their family and teacher.
Oh, that would, that would be fantastic.
I also want to give credit to the teachers. The two schools that invited me had the two winners. So I think, and so it had a lot of, no, no, not because of me, but because they, you know, they were interested and they took notes. And you know, I was really pleased and hopefully we'll get more of the middle schools to do that.
And you know, we can absolutely tell, one of our winners from last year, they had classes who came in and watched county commission meetings. And the student was talking about something that was discussed in a county commission meeting. And so, that's really what it takes. But yeah, it's been a great program. It's one of the things that gets me really excited about what I do.
You need to watch it on YouTube. We actually have them conduct the meeting. They make the mentions and everything.
I wanted to.
The best one, they asked for a raise.
Watch out for her, she could run it. But we'll check it out on YouTube. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Let me, let me just thank you, Vivian, for coming here. And, and one of the things that I think needs said is that so often, we read in the newspaper about our young people. And today is, is an experience that makes us all proud.
It does.
Of our young people. And we need that in this community. We need that in our state. We need that in our country. And, and I certainly, on behalf of the commission, thank both of you for participating and hope that you'll stay involved in county government.
And it's pretty great to see the support of their teachers, their principals, and their parents with them. That's wonderful.
You've got to thank their parents too, for the wonderful work they've done. And appreciate your leadership and your family.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Community Education Outreach Service, one hundred years.
Last year, last week, we had a proclamation for the organization. This week, it's for the one-hundredth anniversary of the organization throughout the state. So I'm going to give this to Jeanne Wilburn. And I'll give that sign. The picture is for you too. Yes, Diane.
Okay, first of all, I want to tell you all, I'm sorry I wasn't here last week, but I had a board meeting the other day, State and I had to go to it. So I got the other ladies to come inform me. And I appreciate your recognition on our C E O S board at that time. Thank you. Okay, we are celebrating our one-hundredth anniversary. And this is the proclamation I'm going to read. Recognition of the one-hundredth anniversary. The West Virginia Community Educational Outreach Service, C E O S, organization is one hundred years old this year, 2014. The first documented club in the state was started in Ohio County on December the fourteenth, 2014, by the Valley Grove Foreign Women's Club, which is still in existence today. As a matter of fact, two weeks ago, I got to go recognize them and give them a certificate and they were tickle pick. There have been several name changes over the years, but their mission remains the same, to strengthen individuals and families through continuing education, leadership development, and community involvement for the betterment of all. Of the fifty-five counties in West Virginia, there are two hundred and fifty-five clubs in forty-five counties. The Montague County Commission wishes to extend their sincere congratulations to all of the members currently participating in this worthwhile organization, May the twenty-eighth, 2014.
Move to approve the resolution is ready. I have a motion and a second on favor of signifying saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel it's quite an accomplishment. Things don't last that long.
No.
That's so true.
So I'm just really proud.
Now you start working on the second two-hundred.
I'm going in as state president here very shortly. I'm vice president now, so.
Oh, that's great, congratulations, that's great.
That's great. Appreciate all your work on that.
And if there's any pictures coming, Montague County has something that we can do to help out.
You're going to have up here, you could be handing it to her. One more.
He's got one more. That's our photographer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have introduction of superintendent of Mason Dixon Park. Gabe, who is the?
Yes, proud to present to you Jessica Smith. She will be our new superintendent of Mason Dixon. She starts on June the first. She's a full-time employee with benefits and looking forward to the great ideas she has. An interview I think we all had with her, very positive and pretty happy to have her here with us today.
She's going to travel with us today, right?
She's going to travel with us today, yes.
Fantastic.
My shoes.
Good idea. We won't lose her after.
Yeah, you might, well, I better not say anything. I'll just leave it there. I move that we approve the appointment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on favor of signifying saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Congratulations and welcome.
Welcome aboard. Now, now we're going to, now we're going to take you around and show you.
Correspondents. No correspondence. Unfinished business, certification election results.
Yes, sir, we completed the canvas last week. And I believe the last race on our ballot was up on Friday for us to certify, so we just held it off till today. But I'll present to you the final results of the election. It just needs a motion and approval of certification.
I've moved that we approve the final results and certify the election.
Second. I have a motion and a second on favor of signifying saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Do we have something?
Do all three of us have to sign? Okay. Not like Mingo County, only one signs it, three times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Discussing the onemorgantown.com project. We have Mr. Matuga here. The.
Yeah, the big issue I brought up and I think we need to address is, is the fact that this is one Morgantown project and it's a, a, a progressive project. And not, not that I'm opposed to the project, but based, based on our, our provisions for hiring or contracting or spending money, you know, we're talking about, I guess, a minimum of twenty-four thousand dollars a year. And based on my reading of the statute, the, there's no exception. I mean, basically, it's a marketing pro, project. And there's no exception to the requirement for competitive bids. So I, I would like, I believe. I wasn't, I wasn't here at the time of the vote, but I believe I would like to, to rescind the prayer motion. And if we want to proceed on anything, have a motion to, for Diane to prepare a request for proposals on a marketing program and submit it. And then, Mr. Matuga and any other interested parties in providing a marketing program for the county could apply properly in accordance with our procurement procedures. Before I made a motion, I wanted you all to discuss it first.
Well, I mean, I don't want to cause a problem because, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it's above the fifteen thousand. I just think that state puts us in a precarious position because when someone has a wonderful idea, they're almost punished because now they have to put their idea out on bid that someone could then technically undo or lower the bid. And, and that's where my concern is. And I wish there was that discretionary area. My concern is I do not want to go forward and then someone say it was over fifteen thousand and we stop it. So that's why I'm willing to, willing to, you know, to second it and move forward because it's such a unique situation. And as I said, it's not even, it's just more even than marketing and it's more than a, it's, it's an overall package, interactive program that will promote this entire community. And I think it's something we need and it's a great idea and I want to move forward with it. But I understand, so I don't want it to stop in any reason. So I won't have a problem with seconding, even though I wish we could have some discretionary leeway. And we don't have it at this time.
That, that's called a home rule.
Right.
Legislatures still have a problem with that.
Yes.
Well, on, on that basis, unless you have anything.
I just, one comment. You know, one of the things we're bound by is, is the amount.
Right.
And the duration. And, and it exceeds both of those categories. So one of the things we, we do is we've got to back up and do it right. And, and that's what we're doing here. And I have a motion and a second to do that on favor of signifying saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Do you have any comments?
Well, you know, I appreciate the audience that you guys have given to this idea. The enthusiasm, the leadership that you've taken to see the project to this point has been great. The one thing I will tell you is that this month, I've had fantastic meetings with the Chamber of Commerce President, the Executive Director for the Mon County, or I'm sorry, the Greater Morgantown Convention and Visitor Bureau, as well as the City Manager, Jeff McCorsky. And, you know, to a T, they've all said, this is something that we need to do. This project needs to advance. How do we do it? And so, there are stumbling blocks. This is out-of-the-box thinking, you know. Commissioner Bloom and I, you know, have spent time talking about this and you've all been very supportive of the project. And, you know, the idea of recruiting companies to move to Mon County to talk about increasing our intellectual capacity with new employees coming to this area and recruiting them. About to mention recruiting potential students to come to this area, parents of those, those students to invest in our community. That's all needed. Everybody agrees that we've got to do something. And so, with that regard, and with respect to Commissioner Bloom's comment about this is our idea that we brought to the commission, that's okay. I believe that there's nobody out there that can do it to the extent that I want to move this and advance this project forward. It is a long-term commitment. I understand that. I want to do it correctly. I want to be transparent in all the, you know, interactions that we have. So absolutely appreciate the support. Let's get it to bid and I'll submit my proposal.
Well, just since you brought that, that up on the long-term commitment, the other aspect of this is we can only commit one year at a time to anything. But, but you understand, we've got to follow the procurement.
Absolutely.
And I, I, I think market, marketing's a great idea, but if you. If you, if you don't do it proper according to legislation, it gets everyone in trouble.
Right, that's no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appointment to boards.
Jim also wanted me to give you a letter of requesting funds for the West Virginia basketballation.
Something fits you about this.
Maybe they might jack it up when I ask for this, I guess.
I seem to remember us discussing this the last time.
Yeah, this is the last year. You're planning June twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. You, you're on, okay, launching out of the Fort Martin ramp this year.
The same, that's what we've been doing ever since that ramp has been built. Now, that's down at the industrial park there, next to the Larita.
I think we just set this aside until we review our July, when is this?
No, this is June.
Oh, this is June twenty-eighth.
Well, what we did before, we put up the five thousand and then, then we take it next year's budget and put, I forget how we did it last year.
Well, you have to, you can't spend next year's.
No, 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 we can't spend next year's budget, is what I'm saying. We put up the five.
What we did is we just approved it.
Okay.
This year. That's, and that's what we got to do this time. We either approve it or destroy it.
Well, it, it's something that I think has brought a lot of nice positive attention. When we last heard how many actual tournaments were between like mayor and county and here, I mean, we were amazed and how much income it brings in. And I do not want to lose it. And I know Fairmont and other areas are looking because there are dying cities that have been, they're having difficulty bringing in economic development in their cities. And I do not want to lose this. I think this is something that more, Montague County and Morgantown is known for. So I would like to move that. So I would like to move that, have the five thousand dollars put in for this event.
I, I was up at Cricket's Fort on Saturday, and I couldn't get in there. They, they were all coming out. I was going in at the time they were coming out. And there was boat after boat.
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
Boat after boat, and one after another. And it, it, it amazes me how much those boats cost. I mean, fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred, hundred and twenty-five thousand for a boat. So I know there's a, I know there's a lot of money in this. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. You have a comment you wanna make?
Well, I was gonna also suggest that, um, that, you know, the lock closures on the Mon River, uh, has caused a lot of, um, consternation, shall I say, people that use the river. You know, this, uh, this is one of those events. There's three events that the Army Corps of Engineers is opening the locks and dams for this summer. Our event's one of those, where they'll actually have the whole river open for, uh, for enjoyment, not only for the tournament competitors, but for anybody that wants to come down and explore other pools of the Mon River.
Good. And they recognize that, okay.
And that, is that gonna be, uh, all weekend or just on, all weekend?
Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday. Well, that needs to be promoted.
Yes.
Uh, the, because we, we're working all the time with the Upper Mon River, uh, Association, trying to, and we've agreed to be the pass-throughs for all these fishing organizations and, and other recreational activities.
Absolutely.
Keep those locks open. So people that, we need to get them on the river, even if they don't participate in the tournament.
Absolutely.
They need to be on the river this weekend.
Yep, and explore the whole river. It's really a fantastic body of water, a great treasure, really.
We have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
We appreciate it.
Appointment to boards.
Um, last week in work session, I discussed with you the vacancy or the expiration of the term of Denzel Slaughter on the Riverway PSD. He, this was a short term. He was appointed to, uh, fill a vacancy. He would like to be reappointed, and no one else has shown any interest in serving on that.
Yeah, and we previously interviewed him, and since it's a short term, I would just go ahead and move that we, uh, reappoint him for a full term on the PSD.
Second. I have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That term would expire April thirty, two thousand twenty, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
First one. Uh, Planning Commission, we had two previous members who've been long-serving, uh, dedicated members. Nancy Treat and Barton Lor have turned in their, uh, applications to be reconsidered for additional three-year terms.
Yeah, and we recently reviewed, uh, as well.
And they, they are very, uh, much contributing, they're virtually.
Yes.
Sign the commission.
Oh, yeah.
You're, you're expert on the planning commission, so.
Yeah, I've been to a meeting or two, yeah.
I, I would move we, we reappoint, uh, those two people.
I second. I have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Both his terms will expire March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Uh, is that all the boards?
Yes.
Contractors' application for payment.
His application is the, in the amount of six hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents by, um, Masera Corporation, who will work on the Justice Center.
This is for the Justice Center. I have a motion?
Move for approval. Uh, well, uh, so, uh, when there's three numbers on it, it checks for rate, it just makes me hesitate.
It's commas in it too.
I know, I know.
It's not coming out of our budget.
What's that?
It's not coming out of our budget.
Well, no, I know.
It's on your show.
I know, but we gotta pay it back. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
The sign right up there. Are you going to be these?
What are these?
These are the personal property records that you.
Do I need some?
Yes. Every year, every year.
Is there a place on here to sign? Oh, I'll see it there. Just one place?
No, all, all the place.
We've got, uh, what, sixteen million to go, huh?
Yep, that's it.
Man, you know you're, uh, sixteen million, we're up seven-five thousand.
Yeah, well, at least it started.
I know, but you're gonna make me nervous wreck with all these commas coming in, six hundred, eight, eight hundred, six, six hundred thousand.
You'll be proud to sign, you'll never see it.
I think the people want me to see it. But I appreciate your offer. I know, you're just looking after my health. I don't know.
They signed it that way to deal with the money.
You don't have to sign anything, I just let them sign it.
Okay. New business. Anything, uh, Diane, for new business?
Okay.
Uh, yes, sir.
Nothing?
Reports from the county commissioners. Commissioner Bloom.
Yes, uh, just a short report here. Um, I received a letter from Mr. Stuart Stickell, the Deputy State Auditor. He has concluded that most of the concern listed in my correspondence are operation, quote, "are operational decisions made by the board" and do not believe a forensic audit would be warranted, end quote. He further states that he will summarize my audit concerns in a memorandum to be provided by the CB, CPA firm assigned to conduct the regular annual audit of the board. He also explained that, quote, "While it is common practice to videotape and/or audio records of public meetings, there is no statutory West Virginia requirement beyond written minutes," end quote. So I believe that I have fulfilled my duty as a county commissioner as required by the Constitution, and would only hope that the board would begin taping, whether it be audio or video, of the meetings to help clarify future concerns on issues concerning the Board of Education decisions. Thank you. Is that it? That's the solace.
Governor?
Uh, couple of things. We got a call from Karen Long at, uh, Bargains and Longers Association. They, the streets within their development are being paved, are being resurfaced, and there's a certain, short section of Stort Lane that, uh, is part of the road system. Uh, and they ask if we might want to tack on or piggyback onto their paving project, uh, for that road section, uh, which we could apply. Uh, they would be, uh, uh, the price would be approximately, well, estimated, three thousand five hundred dollars for a hundred and ten foot by sixteen foot section. Uh, I think that we'll have to find out exactly when, when, uh, they're, they're doing this paving. But I think your suggestion, uh, Mr. President, that we start gathering these and set aside, uh, a review of all the requests for this fund, uh, would be that we would include this along with other requests that are coming in in analyzing where we should, uh, spend this road fund money. Uh, I, uh, I met with the, uh, uh, Director of Transportation along with the President of the MPO, uh, or Chairman, whatever your title is, with the MPO, Anthony Gembroni, uh, Bill Austin, and the sheriff was nice enough to drive there, and he was, uh, he attended the meeting as well, and they, they, they noticed right off that he was carrying a gun, so I don't know if that's why they were nice to or for him. You know, but, uh, well, of course, had a very good meeting with the, uh, Director of Transportation. They, they brought up some issues, um, and concerns, uh, that, that I believe that, uh, we, we need to follow through on, on with, uh, working with, with the MPO. I mean, he emphasized quite, quite emphatically that the MPO, uh, by their statute, uh, is the ones that they have to deal with. I beli, I believe that we need, we need to continue to work with, uh, Bill Austin, who's willing to work with us and the President, Chairman, and review the things that Commissioner Bloom has brought up in the past, and to work that situation out. One of the, uh, one of the things that, uh, I felt was, um, what was positive, I guess, Jimmy, would you say, uh, that we tried to get across. As I've told the, this commission before, in Charleston and the different parts of the state, they have an attitude towards Montague County that they don't have to do anything up here because all we do is fight and never agree on anything, and therefore their hands are tied. I think that was, was expressed to us. Uh, I gave my assurances to them and, uh, emphasized the working relationships of this commission and the two co, the, the, the two other commissioners, uh, that we were, we were committed to work together and solve problems and not fight, and, and to do away with that old vision or that old view. And I, I think this commission has demonstrated that, and I think we've started to demonstrate it throughout the county. It was working for, with the unions and Chamber of Commerce, working with the other departments within the county, working with the municipalities and the cities. But I was kind of surprised that Secretary Maddox came out with that right off the bat. He still had, they still had that vision, a Montague County can't work together and can't get anything done. So I carried the message, which I felt that the two of you would want me to carry, that times are different in Montague County, and we're not going back to the old ways of petty fighting on, uh, one another, and we're gonna go together and work together. And we needed, uh, the Department of Highways and all other state agencies to be partners with us and work to advance this county. And, which he then later in the meeting assured us that, uh, they would be a partner with us. So that, that turned out to be a very productive meeting, uh, and I wanted to report on that. The, the other, the final thing I wanted to mention, I was, I've been reviewing these subdivision regulations. And I, I think we're, I think we're ready, uh, unless, uh, you want to take more time to review them, I think we're ready to look at, uh, setting a public hearing on them and moving forward. Uh, what's, and that's the last thing I got, uh...
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I don't think we expect these to be a finished product. Uh, but, but that's, that's, uh, I think it's a legitimate proposal, and I, and I agree with you. I think we're ready to move forward with the public hearing.
I, I agree. Would we need one, like, afternoon and one in the evening?
Uh, probably.
Yeah.
Because this has, uh, uh, quite wide effect. It affects a lot of different people.
Right, people will be working.
Both homeowners and developers. There are, it's all an interest property. Do, is there, is there a possible time that you could suggest?
Uh, it's June the eighteenth, and we're having the evening hearing for, um, road closure. Do you want me to schedule that?
That's, yeah, that would be good.
That would be good, because I don't think the road closure will take that long.
Right, I think that would, okay.
It'd be pretty short.
That's a good idea.
So I, I. Well, we have one in the morning, one in, we, we have two, so if they can't come in the evening, they come in the morning, so.
What time's the one?
Ten-thirty and.
You can do it eleven in the morning. We have two bid openings.
Oh, okay.
And a hearing, so eleven o'clock in the morning on June the eighteenth would be good for the first one.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we have, uh, the public hearing on the subdivision regulations on June eighteenth, the one at eleven o'clock and the other at?
Six fifteen is scheduled for the road closure, six thirty fifteen, that's basically.
Sure.
I think so. Six thirty for, uh, for the evening session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Would you like this down in the sheriff's overflow room instead of here?
I, I think on the subdivision, we're gonna have a pretty good turnout for that public hearing.
And of course, the planning staff and everything needs to be there.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
The, uh, only other thing, uh, it's almost, uh, brother, sister, whichever you prefer, uh, issue with, with the subdivision is that, uh, survey. And, and we were asked to formulate some questions and give to the Planning Commission, so they then can follow up, uh, with that. So I don't know if we wanna maybe schedule that on our work session next week.
Yeah, I would like to.
Yeah, let's do that.
I, I would like to. I had to ask, um, uh, I'd ask, um, uh, Bill Austin that he should, he should, uh, pose some questions and issues, uh, that we could consider. Uh, on transportation, we might wanna ask Mike Paul, uh, Mike Wolf, uh, any other, or agencies, and even the other, uh, office holders. And make, I, I'm just thinking, we might not wanna use all of them, but at least get a good mix.
Input, yeah.
If, if we're gonna spend money on a survey, we wanna get as many, many, uh, questions answered, uh, that we might have.
Why don't we just put it on a work session for next Wednesday?
Okay.
Planning Commission is going to pay for that survey?
That's what I was told.
Rich told me that he thought that they could go ahead and pay for that. Now, if we expand it, now we may increase the costs. Because I think the way it's.
We budgeted quite a bit for that survey, so I think we'll be fine.
Yeah. But we need to get moving on that, and the same thing with the subdivision regulations, and those issues have been, uh, lingering too long.
Is it, is there an idea as to eliminate so many questions?
Well, the one thing, as you brought up, that in surveys in general, if you add a shotgun effect to the questions, you get more honest answers.
Right.
It's not a targeted, they're not, you know, we're not talking about subdivisions. We're talking about the county. So you get more honest answers on that, so I think that's a very good idea, but you don't wanna have fifty questions either, because people start losing interest, so.
That's, that's why I thought if we get, like, from the constitutional officers and the flood plain and EMS, some questions, if we could just pick, like, one in each area, that would make them more honest.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we started out with, with the areas of zoning, uh, zoning with.
I think one of the questions that initially came up was how people felt about adding to the commission bench, going from three to five commissioners.
That was one question we, we had initially talked about, but I'm not real sure if we didn't have a change of minds on that one.
Just because of the constitutional right, decisions that changed everything.
But I think we wanted to follow up on, and to see if Cheat Lake and the, the cheat areas were ready.
Right.
Uh, at this point in time, and do that by means of a survey.
And from our, our feelings and from people that have attended the last planning, um, sessions, planning meetings, Cheat Lake's very ready. You know, there's some things that have happened in the past year, eighteen months over there, that haven't made the residents happy, and they're like, why don't we have planning? It was offered. He's like, no.
And the, the.
The time is right.
The other thing is that we'd like to get a feel for the public's, uh, uh, impressions of a fire service fee or a fire, uh, levy.
Yeah.
The other thing is that Harrison County has an emergency services fee. Uh, it's not just a fire service fee.
Yeah, actually, that's.
Covers nine-one-one and. It covers nine-one-one and...
Yeah.
But we need to have some questions regarding that to, to get some public input and feedback because those are significant issues.
And there's a lot of expense coming up that has to be covered somewhere.
Right. And, and you know, uh, along with that, in composing surveys, as you talk about that, and what, what, one, one of the issues that, that a lot of people in Monongah County might not be aware of, but we are substantially lower in taxes. We charge our citizens than any other county. The a hundred thousand dollar house even over in, I think it's Marion or Harrison, I think pays four hundred dollars more per, I believe it's four hundred dollars more. Don't, don't rake me down on that, Ben, because I'm not sure of the number, but they...
It's several hundred, because we know that for a fact, yeah.
Yeah, just, just across the line, I'd have to look at the numbers again, they pay like four hundred dollars more than what, a hundred thousand dollar house on this side of it.
I told you, some of you guys didn't, in your meetings for two years now, and one of the things that's kinda been brought up is, well, we haven't raised property taxes. On the other side of that coin is your citizens are saying, but we need these improvements. So, so maybe it's something, well, maybe it's time.
Well, one of the things that we've tried to do is that raising taxes as a last resort.
Yeah, oh, it's...
And if, if there's an alternative to that, we need...
We're raising taxes, but this is what we're using it for.
The, the one thing that we will be faced with, and, and it's coming, whether it happens this year or next year, but we will be faced with the issue of volunteer fire departments.
Yeah.
Because their, their costs are increasing, their demands on them are increasing, their income is limited, uh, so we're gonna have to address that in some shape or fashion. The one thing, too, in terms of charges to insurance companies, when the fire trucks go out, uh, I think we need to look at that in terms of, because they may be able to generate some funds, and, and even fighting fires, I mean, homeowners' insurance, uh, may pay for fire services, uh, in, in regards to a fire.
I remember that, that being from this state, that was one of the things, if you had a service call, you showed up on your taxes.
Yeah.
You know, they, they kept track, but you got, you paid a chunk of that.
But, uh, that's, that's...
You could turn it over to your sheriff's company.
One area, and again, I don't, I just wanna throw, are we interested in throwing, say, three to five questions on the possibility of a recreational levy? And that's the other question.
Well, yeah, because other counties have recreational...
If we know, but saying the levy would specifically say where the money's going, you know, and that's key.
Well, other counties have a recreation. That's, that's what I'm saying, and that's what I'm saying.
Right.
We really need to educate our populace as how, how we have, this commission has held costs down compared to other counties in the state. We have, we don't, we don't have any of these levies.
When you look at Berry County, our neighbors, and you look at their county park system...
Yes. Well, I mean, I, I mean, there's a lot, there is a lot of interest.
It's a little embarrassing.
There is a lot of interest for some form of, like, an indoor pool slash, and I'm gonna throw it out, like, connected with a senior citizens group, you know, connected to Big Brother, you know, a youth. So I think there's an interest now that, that we, they know we can't use...
And it is. It's the right time to start asking those questions.
Yeah, and that's all we're doing.
They're hard questions.
The, the one, the one thing that I, I think that we need to do is that we can't put levies on everything.
No.
And, and we, we can't, we can't use that kind of approach, and I certainly wouldn't support it, uh, and I don't think this commission would support that. But maybe what we need to do on the survey is to get some type of prior, priority placement by the public.
Mm-hmm.
Because, because I think we need feedback. I mean, if it comes to recreation and, and fire services. I, my inclination is that the people are gonna say, we need the fire services.
I, I think you'd be surprised.
I, I don't think so.
Well, now wait a minute. I can tell you one of the basic needs of people is their life and their health.
Yeah, that's absolutely true.
And it's not whether they can walk or run.
If you look at, a, a very recent survey, very recent survey, of people that are coming into Mon County, their second biggest complaint is recreation.
But if you talk to a family that's had a fire and lost one in the family, where are the priorities at?
Well, I didn't say it was an intelligent answer. In reality...
Well, well, that's the purpose of the survey. That's the point, including all the, and getting questions from other, that we can sort of mold this thing to really, uh, break it down and give us all, all that we can, we could possibly get out of a good survey.
And we can't do all things at once. You know, we may, we need to project and plan and set our priorities, and the projects that we establish can, can be according to priorities, and also availability of funding. That's, if you don't have the funding, you can talk about all these projects you want, but they're just pies in the sky.
Thinking out of the box, is it legal, after someone votes, as they walk out, have an exit survey, you know, where they could just fill something out and put it in a box?
An exit survey?
Well, but not of what they voted, but on...
On, you mean, on elections?
No, 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 no. They were wa, after, on election day, when they were done, when they came out and there was these surveys and questions we had, if they wanted to fill out...
You can, you can...
And they could just drop it off.
Yeah, you can have a post-election survey.
Of something like that, and that's why I was thinking, that may just be another option, because those are the people who vote.
But in Monongah County, but in Monongah County, that was only thirteen percent?
Yeah, exactly. Well, but, but they're the ones that vote.
Survey.
Yeah. And it's just, it was just an option. I'm thinking it's just another idea.
Well, we can discuss it for, next week in our work session.
But sub, subdivision regulations might bring thirteen hundred people down to the sheriff's department, right, man?
I guarantee that subdivision regulations will bring down just about all the developers.
The biggest thing on that is going to be education.
Sure.
It's, we're not gonna tell you what you can't do. We're gonna tell you what we're gonna make everyone else do.
Right.
Keep your priorities. That's what I think people are afraid of. That's what that commission thinks people are afraid of.
Yeah.
I apologize, we got off on a tangent.
That's all right. Uh, that's enthusiasm for the issues. Elected official, uh, chief, uh, any comments, any questions?
No, not today. The sheriff is out of town at a conference, and that's why he's not here today.
Okay, tell me who we missing. Mr. Music, our, our assessor.
Our state conference last week, Lakeview went very well.
Did it? How'd they like the votes?
Well, you know what? That was the number one feedback thing we got. Everyone, they thought it was a, uh, a very from the heart gesture because it was done here in the county. And she asked them, and the funny thing is, uh, our assessor from Roan County, when she saw that, her daughter had already gotten Mrs. Brown's collection for her before, so she's already had some of her stuff. So she, uh, purchased a few more to take back, so that was a nice gesture.
How, how many people did you have?
Uh, I think two twenty was the range.
Two twenty?
Two twenty, two twenty. Yeah, and it was well attended, uh, so...
So we're two hundred and twenty cameras?
I think now...
Two hundred and twenty assessors, ready to call. How many, how many assessors do we have? Two hundred and twenty, right?
I'm learning, I'm learning.
In some eyes, maybe we do. Outside of that, the, uh, field staff are still out. They're first and second ward, and, uh, doing some work out in Union. So those are the three areas. If you see a, uh, a white Jeep or staff out there with the vest on, they're from the office.
They fill puddles.
So, and that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Jamie, anything?
Yes, sir.
Our new park superintendent, anything? Bobby Doyle. Uh, Jamie? Ben? Diane?
Uh, just before the meeting, I also had a call on a roadway. This is, um, on the old Stuartstown Road towards the Woodlands Development and others that follow between there and the lake. It appears on the map that that portion is going to be paved, but we need to make sure of that. So I can let these people know. It's very bad. Someone's already bought four tires for one year over the winter.
And I, and I think, you know, Eldon pointed out, and I think we really need to establish our own listing, because we're gonna, as time goes on, we're gonna get more and more of these because the Department of Highways is limited in what they're going to do, and some of these roads are not gonna get touched. And as soon as we initiate the first one, we're gonna get a reaction once it becomes public, well, how come they're doing this road and aren't doing ours? So we need, we need to have a process by which we can rely upon and say, look, here, we collected a listing of the names, here's what we decided, here's the rationale, and here's all we can do because we have limited funds.
Did you say we're gonna meet next week, but in work session on that, or? Because I just, whatever we do, I'd like to make sure it's publicized so people know they could get their letters in about the roads.
I think we're gonna talk in work session today. It's when we can do it as a group.
No, next week.
Okay, so we'll talk next week.
Talk next week.
Okay, we'll talk next week about it.
All right.
These are the forms that I sent out to, um, these were specifically from bus drivers with mountain lion training.
Oh, really?
Oh, that's, that's great. Did, did you check, get anything from the schools or anything yet?
No, that's the only that I've received.
But, but you've requested from...
I'll call Jeff.
You, you know, another group, and I'm gonna look at Ben right now. The newspaper has those pothole pictures. That would be a great, a, a great thing to have input from you all. I mean, I, I, that's one thing I never, it's like the comics and, and that pothole picture, I never miss in the newspaper. I can get to some of the other stuff later. You know, but those are two things that I always look at in every newspaper. You know, I don't, I, I don't know, who, who, do you have one reported?
They probably have a list on that.
I think they submitted to the opinion page. It's like the opinion editor that's on there.
Would, would they have a, would they have a compilation of that that they'd be willing to?
He probably has a file with all those. I don't have.
Okay.
Would you, were you asking for?
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna get everyone to participate.
The delivery, the, uh, delivery drivers might...
Hey, now, that's a good group, too. That's right. That's good. We'd appreciate that, too.
Anything else, Sam? Comments from the public?
If I may?
Yes.
Very quickly.
Name the address, please.
Oh, Joe Kayler, Thirty Abbey Lane, Morgantown, West Virginia. Um, as part of the Celebration America Planning Committee, I would like to invite all three of you to be down at the riverfront in the evening at five thirty, six o'clock. We'd like to use all three of the commissioners to present the awards, because I think that's appropriate. This commission started this celebration, and, uh, the three of you represent all of the citizens that usually come down there. The county, we'd like to use your gentlemen to present the awards to the recipients this year, so please, if you can come down there, I will have notes for you before the Fourth of July, so you can read through it before you go up on stage. That's it.
What time, did you say again?
Uh, if you could be down there at around five thirty, six o'clock, I think that would be appropriate.
It's on the Fourth, right?
Yes, and I will talk to you before then. We do have special parking for you, so you don't have to park six o'clock.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
Hopefully, it depends, actually, it depends on DOH and when they close.
Yeah, we're still working with DOH and the bridge, make sure we can get through there because...
We'll find out in a couple of weeks. I'm gonna meet with that contractor next week and see. Actually, hopefully, they'll start on the west overside first and then move over.
Right, they're gonna, yeah.
The big one.
They're painting it. Pink out here.
Jamie, I don't understand red, white, and blue.
Maybe that's it. Maybe that's why it looked pink to me, because I'm colorblind.
Any other comments from public?
Move to a adjourn?
Have a motion adjourned? Or have a second? Now have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.